... One. Have we silenced the phones? And glad to be here. A glad to be here.
............................................................
Okay, so before we get going for the council, I remind you this. And everybody in the room, one person at a time, talk. Because Dawn had a hard time trying to do our minutes because everybody was talking over the top of one another. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, so in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I'm wanting to adopt the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay.
Can I interrupt for a second? There needs to be a change in the minutes.
Okay.
Because the, um, in the letter that dates no wrong for occupied U Street.
Change it up to the seventeen, it is seventeen. He told me it was the nineteen. Okay, we're good.
Sorry, never mind.
I'm just, that's from the message I got from him. All right, motion made in second on the consent agenda. So in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment period. Citizen may address council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit the comments for three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Do you have any?
Yes. I take an opportunity to hear a public comment. That's all right. The town has been working for a year on a transportation system plan. And we're getting towards the end of the process. This is a draft of the solutions. The early, early last spring, we had an open house, additional open house, which wasn't very effective in getting public input into the process. So we just wanted to bring this to the council's attention and ask for your assistance in getting the word out to the public that this transportation plan is being developed and looking for community input. It involves street improvements, pedestrian and bike, and transit projects. Um, there, there will be an online survey from March 29th to April 12th. So if you, councillors could see to, to help get the word out.
Did we have it on, I actually remember it. I don't know if I was back when I was on social media or whatnot, but we have it going out in our monthly notices?
We're using the utility bills, social media, and the newspaper. Those will go out on March 20th, in the week of March 28th. Uh, we also are going to post flyers next week. So we're trying to blanket the community to get some ideas to ground. This is what has been proposed, but it's not too late to get the community and work to additional solutions that the community might want. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, let's move on down to the...
That's gonna take more than this year.
That's okay. They can come sit in front, they don't like sitting in front. Okay. We, we're not gonna be here that long, are we? No.
Oh yeah, all night. They'll be here till midnight.
You guys are gonna sit crisscrossing the list right at that.
Welcome. Okay, we'll go with department reports.
Do we have any more public comments?
Yeah, I forgot about that. Okay, hearing none, then we'll keep them, public comments. Now we'll go to department reports, uh, we'll start with 911.
Uh, you have a report. Uh, we handled 10,183 calls for services. And on this back page, uh, you'll see which departments that, uh, that use the system the most would be the sheriff's office and then various fire departments and ambulance services. If you have any questions, I can... Does the council have any questions? I do would like to get part of the record that, uh, that we had a funeral day for a retired chief of police, Don Bush. And if we could take like a little moment of silence for him, but I'd like to have it in the record that we acknowledge that the town did and the council his years of service. We kind of like your fire department and the possession. Thank you.
Scott? Do you have anything on, you, I read in here some documentation on the 911.
Oh, did you guys wanna go through that now?
No, we have it. No, I'm like just saying that we do have it.
Oh, yeah, I have it.
Go through it and look at it.
Yeah, and you should have it in your, uh, your packets. And if you guys wanna digest that, uh...
You're, you're on item H, so you're on the agenda for later on.
Okay.
In county.
We had this conversation in the hallway.
Yeah. Okay, Claire? It's not your opinion.
I didn't focus.
Thanks.
Okay, um, and Darren?
Yes, in addition to our submitted report, I've got, I've got a little update. On our project. Um, after that, we'll do some questions. I'm gonna give a little bit of background because we have, we have two new members, council member. So the cooling water project started about three years ago with Red Rock biofuels. At one time, we were going to furnish them with water out of our domestic water system, which at that time was going to be sufficient for their demands. As they worked through their project, their water demand got higher and higher and higher. The only way we could service them was through the wastewater program, water from our lagoons. Uh, secondly, that's a good option as it doesn't use any of our well water, uh, infringing any more of our domestic water. So the decision was made to pump the water down from our lagoons to Red Rock. They would use it for their cooling, goes into the tank, acts as fire storings as well as cooling water. So their demand on their heat balance got up to 650 gallons a minute. That's why we couldn't furnish them out of the domestic water system. So we're pumping the water, uh, down to Red Rock. They use it through their process, uh, cooling the generator turbines, as well cooling tower. We lose approximately 100 gallons a minute before it comes back. So we're pumping, uh, approximately 450 gallons a minute back to the lagoons to be recycled in the four primary lagoons. Uh, they also, they treat the water, so we had to look at, uh, what the water had in it when it came back to make sure it didn't damage our lagoons. Some of their, some of their water had a high chemical oxygen demand, uh, about 100 gallons a minute. And we couldn't accept that into the lagoons when we were working on our new lagoon permit, the NPDS permit, that the DEQ issues, that's good for 10 years. Uh, we couldn't take that, so we revised the NPDS permit on how we were gonna handle it. Uh, so Red Rock takes that 100 gallons a minute, sends that to a separate pond of which they built, um, on town's property and the town sold that to them. Uh, after additional treatment, it comes back to our primary lagoon. It's a little bit of a complicated project. I have some schematics up here. I should go down here. Uh, we picked up water out of the lagoon on the fourth, the fourth primary lagoon. Uh, we put it there for the pump station because there was already a coronator outfall there. Uh, so all we had to do was, uh, build a bump, uh, floor and a pump station on top of that. That set the size of that building, if you drive down on South 9th Street, down on Stock Drive, you'll see it on the edge of the lagoon. We didn't have to put in a new, a dip crossing in the lagoon, we didn't have to put a new pipe in, so we just cleaned up that old building to set the pump. That pumps, we'll pump it down to Red Rock, uh, close through their process. And then the water will come back to a pump station that we built under this project that goes back to the lagoon. The pumps are in, electrical wiring is, is completed. Um, we don't have, I don't have a delivery date quite as of yet. Supposed to be here any day now according to the contractor. For the coronator that goes in at the lagoons, we have to coronate the water. As it goes down, we have to meet a contamination restraint at, at Red Rock, which that's why we added the coronator. Coming back, it circulates, uh, back through the lagoon, so we have no net, uh, use of any other additional groundwater. And, uh, we're actually getting rid of some water, about 150 gallons. So, that project, uh, was awarded last fall. We were under time constraint to get it done, Red Rock wanted it done by late January. That didn't work out due to pipe supplies and equipment, so we extended the project. Right now, we're, we still are head of Red Rock still. So we have no, no issues at this time. The project was awarded. Wasn't enough money in the loan, um, from IFA. We need 157,000 about to finish. Uh, we need to amend that contract, and that's what that spreadsheet I sent out, uh, round to everyone that shows, the project budget and how it was done. That, that amount, that project has, that contract to the town has been amended twice. First amendment dropped the interest rate down to 1.75%. So Red Rock was given the choice, they could pay the difference, um, since they're paying the one payment on this job. They could pay the difference, uh, they wanted to add it to the loan, which is no surprise at 1.75% interest. That's probably the cheapest money they have. So they have, they have approved the increase, um, quite some time ago, actually. We wouldn't have awarded it unless we had to, um, step up to the table. So, uh, I can go through those costs, uh, or we can wait till the end.
So we need to go back and increase the loan, is that what you're saying there?
Yeah.
By the 157,000.
157. They like to see some contingency, so I add in 50.
Okay.
That's where that 50 came in. I just stuck it in.
Have, have we spoke with the lender until we even consider this?
Mm-hmm.
Are they fine with it?
Mm-hmm.
The thing, the thing that bothers me is where they laid everybody off right now, and they're not doing anything down there.
That's a part supply issue.
So, well, but still, I just don't wanna get stuck with something that we can't afford to pay for if they don't do that.
They're, they're not gonna default. I, I can't, I can't give you an update on their schedule, I, I'm not part of the management team. I have heard it from high-placed officials at Red Rock that this project is gonna be finished. And we have an agreement with them to repay back that loan.
Well, I'm not gonna pay back that one, but I'm not, I'm talking about the, the wanting to add more money to the loan.
No, it's the same one.
It was, yeah.
When we made the loan, when we made the loan contract with, with Red Rock, we have a provision in there that the final project makes a bit more than what was shown on the loan in that. So they've agreed to that amount. And we have a signed agreement for the additional amount with Red Rock. And we think we need them.
I feel more comfortable having that.
Yeah, I would too.
Well, they need to understand once they're signing off for it, so, I mean, I, I would throw off.
I don't know, is, is Jeff's not here? Jeff made the agreement. I know we left it open. Headland.
Oh.
When you, when you look at the agreement, it says that it'll be based on the final project amount, what the loan is closed out of.
I'd have to redo that again, I don't remember the specifics, but I would, I think I'd rather be prudent in asking for an additional document acknowledging the additional expenditure, yeah.
Well, it certainly, that certainly be done.
Yeah, do we really need another $50,000? And we already had 133,000 contingency. And I know, I mean, I know the idea behind it, I get it, but, I mean...
I don't wanna see so many.
I feel like if the money's there, it's used. One of those believers of, if it's there.
It does seem like a good number to throw in.
And what are, I mean, typically it's 10%, right? Pretty typical in construction, 10%. I mean, we're probably there.
It doesn't need to be that much, because the, the project is pretty much complete.
And we're at dispersments of 1.2 roughly?
Change it to 30.
And we haven't tapped into the original contingency, right, of 133?
Yeah, it's part, it's a...
I don't think it's actually been used, though. Since we were at 1.9 with those three fees, then we're at 1.6 after all the chain borders, cost of construction, amount remaining, 425,000. Seems like that would cover the additional 170,000 plus contingency.
Well, okay.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a really good, yeah.
The contingency's in there.
So the contingency, as well as the designated amount for construction, is part of the total amount of funding that was available. And given that amount of funding, we're 157,000 short for their full bid.
With, with using 130,000?
Yes, with using 133,000 as well. Sorry, you totally can't hear. Um, so yeah, that is in there, that's factored in too.
So then what were the additional, I guess what some of my confusion is, what were the additional items? And I, I know we read an email, I read one that said there were no additional items, but what?
When the project came in, remember at one time we were, we talked, you know, they had some extra steam available?
Mm-hmm, we took that out, that's the only thing you do.
We were thinking about using that to, up, to increase the capacity of the geothermal system. So, when we awarded it, the town opted not to do that. So we deleted that change order number one.
Right, would you cut it back 300,000, 250,000?
Then, railroad originally wanted, um, steel bore casing underneath the railroad, which is pretty typical. Uh, so we have that in the bid. You bore that underneath the tracks first, then you slide your pipes through it. Anyway, uh, Mr. Hutton at the railroad, when we were building it, came up and said, you know, we need to replace some ties, why don't we just dig under the tracks? Which I really appreciated that, because we got across the tracks quite a bit quicker. And we deleted those steel casings. That's where that $70,000 deletion came from.
But then there was an additional 35, and that was for that?
When we deleted, we had two borders, locations, we had the railroad and we had Dead Man Creek. We couldn't dig through Dead Man Creek, so we had bores under Dead Man Creek. Even though at the time of construction, you couldn't drill a pick in the ground down there at the bottom of Dead Man Creek. It was part of the original, um, environmental report that Red Rock did the environmental report, we did not do that. But, um, they had us going boring underneath the creek. So we deleted all that on the creek. So, and the contractor said, yeah, I, but I'm still gonna bore under, but I'm gonna use HDP pipe and I'm gonna pull it under there, which is fine and which I approved. So he should have had that in change order two.
I don't think I've seen, aside from the one I got through today.
He didn't. Came back and he said, well, we bored this extra 200 feet on change order two to put this under there. And he did do the work, he did put in the HDP, so, um, we should have had that in change order two, but it was valid work and he did it. So, on change order three, we paid for the pipe on a linear foot basis. There's trenching, there's linear foot of pipe, there's backfill, um, and there's any top surface that's there's on there. So we pay that basically on a linear foot. So where he bored 200 feet underneath the creek, well, I deleted what we're gonna pay for on those linear foot bases, because we're not gonna pay twice. And I added the door cost in there and it added, uh, $34,000. So we, at this point, in the contract, we're 35,000, $36,000 almost underneath the board, underneath the bid price. So I think we've done pretty good. But where's that 130,000 minutes ago?
Yeah, the numbers just aren't adding up, and that's what I'm struggling with. Where was our original loan amount? Do you remember up top?
Yeah, it's, it's those top, it's those top figures on the top.
So 1.6 or the 1.9?
No, it's those top figures. See where it says on your loan?
Oh, yes, sorry.
My key went first.
Okay, so it was 1.6 something roughly.
Thanks, Darrell. Well, anybody got one?
I'm guessing it's 1.6, not 2.6.
We can add those up. There's an engineering line item at the top. The second line item, this one, the loan amount was from construction.
Oh, okay, so that was the only loan amount?
Right.
Okay. Did we have, we, so we weren't anticipating the engineering fees or the contingency in our original amount? We didn't put those in there?
Well, they're, yes, they're in there.
Original?
Yes. We're only talking about the construction budget and the contingency, but the engineering budget hasn't changed.
So then the loan was a total of 1.628?
I don't know. Had that up.
That's what I assume it's that, around the rough amount. And then, but this says that we paid out, I mean, payment 1, 2, 3. I assume these payments have nothing to do with contingency or contingent, they're only to Morello, right?
Right.
To Morello?
Yeah, it didn't, leave the engineering out of it. That line item didn't change. Only one we're talking about is the construction line item.
Yeah.
Because if you go down to Morello payments to date, and if you see the dispersments to the town, under that, those are the dispersments the town has drawn down from IFA to pay Morello. Nothing else, so it doesn't reflect the engineering budget.
So I don't see how the contingency has been used then.
Okay, the amount remaining, the amount remaining in Morello's contract is 445,000, by other 102. Correct? How much money do we have left?
1.6, that's not much. But 445,132. According to this number, we have a bad verified, that one, what's been dispersed versus, um, the original loan amount.
Okay, the, the total loan amount is 1.6?
28.
04347. So you have to take...
It's going to 24,000.
You have to take what's left, what's left to pay Morello in their contract based on the quantities we have. And if you, if you take the amount of loan funds we have, the amount of total available funds of 1.4750, we've stuck the contingency, if you're looking at it, is that right, Carmen?
Yeah.
So that's where the 133,000 contingency is at.
So original construction, the regular construction budget was 1.336. The construction contingency was 133, no. So, out of the remaining...
Okay, but I wanna know, what was the original loan amount for sure that we have?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Those two numbers only?
Four, and then the engineer.
Okay, so that adds up to, since I don't have a total here.
1,604,000.
It's the 1, 604, not this 1, 2, okay. 604, 347.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's still 421,000 dollars in what has not been paid out on the construction part. We obviously haven't paid the engineer since we're in the first event, right?
You have, you have.
Oh.
We just didn't reflect it in this because the only issue is the construction.
The only need to change is for the construction line item.
And what does that change? That's, that is...
157,000 dollars.
Where? What, what is he doing? Did he build me a house?
Well, his bid was over the loan amount when we awarded it.
Why would we get a loan amount less than the bid?
Because you get the loan amount like two years before the project ends up actually going to fit, or like a year before. So it's a guess. And then when the contractors submit their bid, you take the lowest bid, and sometimes it's a little more than what the estimate was.
That's why we can amend the law. So what, what was our, over the engineer, between the engineer's estimate and the total bid amount, what, what was the difference?
Well, our, our construction would have been 1.1236.
Okay, now that was, 1.336 is what the original, uh, what was your estimate, Darrell? The 1.336?
I don't have a list because it's the base of the loan, I don't know, it's probably that.
Okay, and then what was Morello's, what was Morello's bid?
Mm-hmm.
It was 312 over. 312,000 over the 1, 12.
312,000 over.
And Morello's bid included, though, their original bid included that geothermal, um, stuff that the town was gonna do, and then we took off.
Right.
So that wasn't ever part of the loan.
So they were, they were 300,000 over roughly, and then we deleted the 300 and something thousand.
The 252,000, so that wasn't...
So that left him about 100,000 over?
75,000 there.
75?
Yeah. And I don't think we would, I need to scroll here. Hang on a minute. Can we go ahead and pause this?
Yeah, um, Darrell? I need to pause this so we can get these kids out of here real quick. Will, will that be all right with you guys?
Certainly.
Okay, with council?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna jump over to, um, Lake New School of Dance with Jennifer.
Okay. But I'm not proud of something that doesn't take so much brains.
Yes, it does, it will.
I'm gonna pass this down. There's one I need to do. Okay, all right. Thanks. Yeah. Okay. All right, so the reason why these guys all came with me is this is the time I actually teach their class. So I said, whoa, you're going to the coun, town council meeting, and you have to be quiet, so they've done well.
They've done awesome.
So anyway, um, I'm the owner of the Lake New School of Dance, and as of last year, because of COVID, um, we didn't get to do a dance recital. And so this year, I'm not going to order 13,000 dollars in costumes. This year, I'm going to just assume that I can't get into a building again, because the theater's not open. I can't get into school and take all my dance students. So I have, um, changed my location. I actually rent the old Huffstetter Building, the funeral Huffstetter's. And so we are gonna do what's called, we're gonna... And so, we are gonna do what's called, we're gonna do a parade number. We're gonna dance, do a parade dance. And so, we're wanting to, on June 12th, we're wanting to go on D Street, so right in front of the Marius Building. We're gonna go down that street, we're gonna go up to the swimming pool, turn back around, finish at the Marius Building. Really simple. So, what it, what the request is, is to find out if we can just close that road off for a few hours that day. I've already talked to all the neighbors up there, I talked to the sheriff's department, they're all willing to help me out. Um, tentatively, the schedule would probably be from about 9:00 AM, when my little littles would go and then 11:30, my next group would go, I have about 150 dance students. And then, um, at 3:00 is when my older kids would go. No, excuse me, 1:00 and then finish at 3:00. And so, that's kind of my guesstimate right now. Until we get out on the street and start actually doing it and seeing what these guys are gonna do, then it might be a little bit smaller. So, we would just turn there at the big turnout there at the swimming pool and just come back around and end in front of the Marius Building.
Way to get it, Ben. I think it's great, I think it's awesome for the kids.
Yeah.
I really, really appreciate you thinking that through. Um, I'm all for whatever, we got things down there, we can.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the road closure for Lakeview School of Dance on June 12th.
I'll second.
Motion made second, so the bigger?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great, keep it.
Hi, guys, thank you.
You understand the principal's office?
Yeah. Sorry about that, Daryl. Thank you, Daryl.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, what about that?
So, my question to you, Darrell, is, you have roughly 75,000 over the, the bid amount? Are your estimated amount?
Uh, it's more than that. Take, take, you need a chalkboard.
Oh, my gosh, you're telling me.
Everybody go. Take, take, the bid came in on the bid packets when we opened up the bid at 1, 9, 1, 16. Everybody see that number?
Right there.
Take away the 252, 4, 9, and 5. And we did film the fight, we opted into it, it wasn't part of the loan document. Okay? Then we get a difference. Then we get a difference of about 327,000. Correct, Carmen? And that's after we take out the, after we took care of that. So, if you take that 327,000, you subtract the contingency that's up there, which is 133, 133. You subtract the savings we've made on change orders, which is 36,000. Okay? Yeah. And you'll end up with 157. That's probably, that's where we got the 1, 2, I said. Are they clear on that?
Okay.
Okay.
And then 50,000 contingency?
That's what I stuck in there. I have to put some in there. The agency will want to see some in there.
Well, we already are at 10%. I mean, some of our fees are already kind of above the norm, it seems like.
Well, you could make 30%, 30, no, right?
Who would you like to be?
Um, yeah, just send it over to that.
Ken, you're welcome.
We'll change it quick.
But they have this thing, at this point, Darrell, we need to verify the numbers. And we need something in writing from Red Rock agreeing to those numbers.
We have received an email agreeing to the increased amount with them and their contract does re, you're gonna do an amendment with them to memorialize that fact, but the contract already does leave that whatever the actual construction costs are, that becomes their loan payment.
And I still, I still want something with the final number, signed by Red Rock, agreeing to the repayment of this loan. I don't want the town stuck with it. If we don't have something in writing and signed, that leaves us liable. And I'm not gonna agree to this, I gotta see that.
We'll provide you guys with an amendment that has the amber station specifically with that amount on it and have them execute it and then have council do it at the same time.
My numbers aren't adding up with what's on this page. And granted, I'm following school pencil, but.
That's what I told you.
Definitely, yeah.
So, we'll review the numbers, we'll get through them, and we'll look at it before we review anything.
Thank you, guys.
I would prefer the agreements to Mr. Hitler.
And like you said, they don't have a problem with it, because that was kind of the plan, so we'll just make sure we have it. It's very simple, this is the new amber station schedule, so if you guys can give me that with the repayment amount and the interest rate and everything else, so I can just attach that. Like I did with the last one, that weighs really good.
There shouldn't be a problem to get a signed agreement.
They've already agreed to it, so they just need to acknowledge that amount.
That's fine, but I want something in writing that protects the town from the liability to get stuck with this one.
They can't operate without it.
I know.
Thank you. I don't write agreements, that's just. Okay, anything else on that? Okay. Um, the North End Project, uh, out to Pacific Pine, Stab, um, my office, a couple other users out there. Started over a year ago, before Christmas, 2019. Um, Pacific Pine and Stab came in here requesting the water sewer service. Mr. Larson needs the water for his upgrades up there, which have been fairly expensive. So, we, we changed a lot of it over the period of time. There was a time in there, IEMRIS was gonna be part of it, because we initially did the work with Cornerstone, they sold it. Anyway, um, IEMRIS wouldn't respond, they're finally out of it. I went back through the, the estimates that I prepared on it. Um, we have quite a pile of them, we looked at a lot of different options. First one was 217, 2020, um, had a construction estimate of 650. I will point out that that still had a pressure sewer main and it included the grinder pumps and whatnot to the individual services. As we went through that. As we went through different options, um, IEMRIS was finally decided to be out of it. We updated the loan budget on the 5th of October, 2020. Um, that also included the grinder pumps. We came up with a total budget of 708 at that time. That is the number that the loan document is based on. As we worked more with IEMRIS and Mr. Larson and Stab, we scrunched the project down quite a bit. Went back and forth, I have four or five other estimates here between that one and 1st of February. What we did is we worked these things backwards, we wanted to pay the, wanted to pay the loan payment with the tax revenue from, um, the people that annexed. So, we kind of take that amount, work it backwards and see what we can make for a loan amount and then see what extra money was, was needed to put into that. So, that's where we are right now. The results of that was, um, Stab are putting in $40,000. I've seen those agreements, maybe, you guys probably haven't. Larson's putting in $40,000. Anderson's putting in about $10,000 and, uh, the town is contributing from the sewer fund, um, approximately 170,000. So, that gets that payment relatively close to the revenue that comes from the taxes. So, that's what the plans are based on right now. So, we're at 705,000 as the estimate right now? Nope, no.
So, 650.
We also, we also did a gravity sewer option, wanted to look at that option. Uh, we did that on the 1st of February, but that was way too expensive.
I'm really worried that those estimates of construction are gonna be too low, given the huge influx that we've seen in prices.
Well, I don't know, I asked Scott to comment on that. I, we just had a meeting with IFA this last week, they got problems on all their projects. Arthur, um, runs the program, mentioned they got, you know, they're making loan amendments and changes. Pipe took another, uh, like, running other, yeah, the data.
Cement, yeah.
We do the best we can with what we have, um, although, we've got the, we've got the project down now when we made the changes to 605.
Now, we're putting that out to bid through soon, right? Have it done here?
Ready to go to bid right now.
Ready.
I got the packet right there.
Can I get a copy of those plans?
Sure, should have some here. I, I have the plan, I don't have the bid packet.
Yeah, I've been on with several pipes players here this last two or three weeks over different other things. And they've had, just this last two weeks, HD Fellers had 17 contracts canceled at the last minute, because the pipe is not available for it. This, and they're not giving you any prices until it's loaded on the truck.
Wow.
So, this isn't a engineering problem or anything else, it's just the way things are right now.
Yeah.
So, this might be the single worst time in the world to be putting on a pipe job, because I don't know how else to do it. But I mean, that's, if it has to be done now, I want, wanted you guys to know what you're getting into. I gave Jeff some letters that you guys should have somewhere stating that, you know? But it's a scary deal with pipe situation right now.
Uh, just to add some, some clarity in that, because I've had issues with this and some other projects, and I was just given some information that I felt was very interesting. Uh, during, well, and this actually isn't COVID, but COVID is not helping it, uh, with all those power outages and the weather they had in Texas. Texas has a couple plants that makes resin. You can't make your PVC pipes without the resin, and those plants, I don't think have actually fired back up yet. Once they fire back up, they are two weeks away from producing any resin at all. So, you are looking at that delay that hasn't even started the clock yet on why these pipe prices are increasing so much.
And the supply has already caught up with, uh, with the inventory. You know, I mean, the, the demand, I guess, has already caught up with the inventory they had.
There is no.
There is no inventory.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I just, that's all I really came to say.
So, let, let me ask you a question, Scott. How would, in your position, how would you bid a project like this?
I don't know that I can, that's what I came to say.
Yeah.
I don't know that I can. There's options out there, you go ductile iron, it's still available. And I don't think there'd be a hell of a lot of price difference. But that's, that's, I mean, from the way PVC is going up every day, and I'm looking the next six months down the road to a minimum, that it's gonna stay high until they get their inventory back up. That would be the only option I would throw up at a bid.
And really, once people start paying that price, we don't know if it's gonna come down.
Well, that's it. Well, I mean.
Never generally does.
It's gonna, it's a supply and demand thing, for sure. You know, I mean, if this construction backs off a little bit, and I'm not sure what this administration's gonna do, maybe jump, maybe not, I don't know. But that's, that's gonna be your indicator right there. But like, that, that's, I guess, that's, as of today, if I was to bid it today, I don't know that I could give you an honest bid or one that's outrageous just to cover my neck.
Is Larson gonna be okay for the wait?
No.
I don't think so.
He's trauma, we need to definitely.
I, I think.
What's the life span of ductile seal these days? You know, it's not different than the old ductile seal.
Ductile lasts a long time.
Yeah, ductile.
We have some that have been in since the 40s that looks really good. Problem with ductile, it's, it's expensive, but then it's also expensive to put in.
Is it any more expensive, though, right now?
Well, your installation costs will go up, because you can't pick it up and pack it around.
Yeah.
You know, too many, you gotta place it in the machine or in the ditch by machine, you gotta do that. We could put a ductile alternate on it, don't have to accept it. We could also put an HDBE on it. Those are acceptable pipes. We could have bid alternates on those.
I mean, are we gonna use a truly comparable product in longevity?
HDBE may even lower the cost of the project.
It might, it might.
Daryl, there's one other thing I, I wanted to say about that. The Class 200 and the Class 1 Styxie is still pretty much available right now.
PVC?
Yeah. Gasketed pipe. This schedule, 83 inches, it almost don't exist.
I think we definitely need to find a way to make this, this work.
Well, we can probably do an alternative.
We can do some alternatives, you don't know till you bid it out. The contractors submit their bid, it's, it's their deal, no matter what.
Right, it's their deal, but it still makes us look bad if a contractor can't produce.
Well.
We know that there's a pipe issue and if somebody gives it, says they can get the pipe, and then they can't, we know there's a pipe issue. It still makes us as a town look bad. It makes it look like another failed project.
You don't, you, you don't have to ward it either.
Can't you put options in there for piping for them to bid on?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think that we should put an option in there for HDB and ductile. Okay, we can do that.
So, I think, uh, Mr. Farber, you asked a valid question, are we okay with the wait? I just wanna respond to that a little bit.
Oh, I didn't see you.
I see the hallway, oh, there you go.
I didn't see you over there.
Yeah, so I appreciate you, uh, asking that. So, we've, we've been on schedule, we've, um, we broke ground last September on about a $3 million project. In doing so, we were required to put in a sprinkler system because of our expansion of square footage. We are almost done with the sprinkler system, we have heavy delays on pipe. It showed up and we wrote a check for it. And so, our pipe came, it's in, we're on schedule, our building's done, I've got machinery there. It's, again, a $3 million, our expense project, and we're 30 to 45 days away from starting machinery up. So, um, yeah, the, the party started on our end and it's not gonna stop, so, um, I, I, you know, I don't know, I guess, uh, I'm, I'm trying to maintain a solid relationship with our local, uh, building inspectors and hoping for some, uh, some grace and some creativity and some flexibility, because we're moving. So, we, um, would love to have some water there and, um, there's not a lot I can do about that, but our, our, our ship has sailed.
I would love to find a way that we can get this completed sooner than later. I appreciate the work that you've done and for the community as well. You know, you've created additional jobs, things like that. Unfortunately, the worst thing that I think I've found, government moves very slow, even if we wanna move fast, so it's very frustrating. And I, I don't know, I think we have to look at alternatives, put that out there and just, if we have to have some work sessions to think of some creative ways to, even in short-term ways, help you out. And figure out what we need to do, you know, same with building inspector, things like that. We, I mean, we wanna move forward, but even if we started construction, we couldn't start till, and we're what, months out probably from when we work?
We have to advertise for a minimum of two weeks.
Yeah, and then.
I would recommend a little longer, but.
Let's say somebody was actually available even to start in a month. I mean, from what I'm hearing, contractors are years out right now on some.
I don't think we're that.
Projects that.
We have a completion date on it, yeah.
What, what, when would be, with the weather and everything in consideration, we all, let's say if everything went smoothly, we all open?
It'll depend on material.
Well, let's say not depending on material. Let's say everything was perfect. How long, what would be our best case scenario?
Our last time frame you put together, just a few days ago, was obvious for closeout.
Completion?
If we can get going, huh?
That's, that's, please. So, to give you an idea, I would realistically say worst case would be next year completion. That's, that's maybe a little pessimistic, but, you know.
It's gonna pass somebody on, I mean, it's like, actually.
Well, I, I'm just like I said, that's just me being pessimistic, not.
I think we just, we need to put it out with the, we'll see where we end up.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Uh, the wellhead protection project is also a really project of, of course, been working on that.
Uh, Jeff was, um, top of the dharrel, ended up looking at the pump outputs for well eight. Uh, it's pretty clear that that well, uh, that that well screen itself is clogged and crusted with all sorts of junk. Uh, this is just general buildup from our water quality. Over time, you just get, you know, a crusty buildup. Think of it like a white scale. Um, so we've got a couple of options to acid treat that. Uh, we've been going back and forth on it. Um, I haven't really been doing much as I don't have a formal, anything from, uh, town telling us to go ahead and make further, uh, further entrances and what wanna do.
I was talking, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I was.
To the water source protection?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that one I am actively doing. Uh, so I would say about a year and a half ago, uh, no, maybe last spring, uh, Jeff found a grant, uh, for water source protection from Oregon Health Authority that he asked me to go get for the town. Uh, it involves making sure that our, uh, drinking water sources are clean, that there is not contamination uh, outside of natural causing contamination getting into that wellhead. So I wrote the grant, it got funded. Um, the first scope of it was to, uh, advertise in town. Uh, we advertised for about a month or so in the paper, uh, reach out, any sort of public outreach we could do to try to get people who had buried underground like, uh, like, uh, fuel tanks to come forward because Jeff was concerned that it's fuel tanks specifically that is just, you know, they're leaking a little bit and it leaches into the groundwater and will eventually uncontaminate the wells. Uh, or, you know, the source of the water the wells are pulling from. So we got that funding under the scope from OHA that we are only testing and actually doing analyses on wells, or I'm sorry, on underground tanks that are within the cone of influence of the well, which is basically just a fancy word that if you take the well in the center of big circle, that circle is the cone of influence. If you are outside of that, you spill whatever you want on the ground, it cannot get into the water that that well is pulling. So we did that, uh, found a couple of tanks. None of them were in any, so any of the wells and areas that we could test, most of them are like up on the hill over here. I still checked them out because somebody called. They all actually seem to be in good working water, no smells, no weird colors, no mushy ground, nothing that leads me to believe that there was anything wrong with those or, you know, dangerous to the homeowner. Um, so I went back to OHA and rechanged the scope of the grant to just sort of do a, uh, a design transect of testing, uh, specific areas in a grid around the wells. And then if any of those areas showed any contamination, designing a sort of mini grid around that area so we could pinpoint. So instead of finding the tanks and seeing them contaminated, I'm looking for contamination and following the contamination to find the left, or, you know, to find the source of it. I got about two-thirds, I would say, of the fieldwork for that done, which involved me measuring something called resistivity, uh, which is a soil's reaction to electricity, basically. The more contaminated it is, the faster electricity zaps through the ground. Um, if it's not contaminated, it goes slower. Uh, so I went all the way down Roberta from, uh, from just past where you, I think it's Missouri and Roberta, all the way down to Stock Drive. Uh, I only really found one area that was showing any contamination, which was great because that's our ponds that we passed by. That shows me nothing is leaking from those ponds, which is awesome. Uh, that's an RV park, that's a big transformer, a bunch of other things. The vet, everything was good there. Uh, a little bit, uh, north of the vet, if you line up, this would be west of the fairgrounds and if you go a little past that, there is the old mill site. That showed a little bit of contamination. Um, you also, sort of outside of this project, uh, the state has been doing, uh, brownfields grants. So there had already been, uh, environmental studies just done this last summer on that mill site. I can tie the contamination from that one area to the mill site. We know about it. There is nothing else to find. There is nothing we can do about it and it's not contaminated enough to affect the property. In fact, that was recommended to allow home development on. Um, I still need to go down Stock Drive lane to the west and down one forty to the west. That's the rest of the fieldwork I have to finish up. I can't do it till the ground's, um, softer without, uh, you know, snow and mud. There's not a rush. I have about another, uh, year or so to get those results in. I'll finish that up. Given what is around that area, I'm not expecting anything weird to come out of it, but you never know, so I'm gonna run the tests and see what I get. At that point, depending on where we are with funding and how many hours it took, I will either design the next level of study if Jeff wants to take it, or I will do the next level of study. And again, that's sort of depends on, on what the results are and how much time we've already spent on it. Uh, at that point, it, you get, you will get, the town will get a nice final deliverable showing, uh, the areas that I studied, what the results were and sort of an interpretation of this, you know, this area of houses, this RV park is, shows no evidence of contaminated groundwater. And then just sort of with this peace of mind that our wells are protected, that there is not gonna be more contamination due to people or businesses. On the other end, if I do find something, that also tells us there is a problem here. So then we can work and, you know, this is all theoretical, right? Because depending on the problem, uh, that'll determine how we figure out a solution. Um, so the end of the report, the end of this project is really just a list of recommendations. If there are any of next steps you can take to protect the water. And that's the point, that if we did discover something that was like, oh my God, you know, this could really kill people, uh, you can then go and write another grant to get the next level of funding for a whole new investigation to, uh, to, you know, remediate or mitigate depending on exactly what the problem is. Uh, I expect to have that completely finished and tied up, everything complete, uh, I would say late spring. Questions?
Shannon's just throwing things.
Okay, that's the, that's the update. Um, well, eight doesn't need an acid treatment. That's another issue. We've done it before.
They do or don't?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
We've done it before. Uh, anyway, um, everyone here works on these projects that are complicated. There's a lot of things to coordinate and do, so if you have any other questions, we're here. Have you, have you more questions?
I don't. Second's fine.
Okay.
All right, well, uh,
All right.
Somebody else had the floor.
What's that?
Somebody else had the floor.
Okay, public board?
You're up.
Uh, I don't really have anything to add to my report other than those, uh, those warnings from the pipe supply companies. I put a couple of them in the back of the report. They're calling it, uh, for, uh, force of nature, uh, um, you know, force major. And they're, they're talking about twenty percent minimum increase in pipe prices. I thought HPVE was also involved with the same thing, but maybe not. It's just a great, great option for the project.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing to look at.
Yeah.
I think it'd be better than ductile.
Yeah.
Uh, did you bring up chaplain?
Uh, no, I didn't. The mayor and I also met with a roofing contractor at the pool today and he was pretty impressed with the integrity structural from inside the pool. Went in and looked up and, and he took some samples in there and he's pretty certain that we don't have any dry rot or wet rot, which is, he said, pretty amazing for, uh, for a pool house. And then he, uh, cut a sample out of the top, took that with him and then resealed it. He's gonna get a, a price together to fix that roof as well as the one for the bathrooms at Kitty Park. And then we have another contractor to come look at the same thing on Friday. We should have two, at least two in the next, uh, week or so.
Awesome, thank you.
When you get those, you'll get it to the council, the estimates?
Certainly.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
We, we pressed him a little bit, tried to get him to, to give some numbers. He said, I, I don't know, twenty-five to thirty-five.
Now that was on the flat.
That was, they're both flat, right?
But not changing it or pitching it.
No, no. But it has a twenty-five year guarantee. He said the guarantee is bulletproof.
All right.
And I'll tell you, you said the lights worked?
Yeah, we have Joe from, uh, High Desert Electric coming up to replace the panels below the deck and a new panel in the building. All new light switches, uh, which came in even a little bit less than what we thought they might, so.
What did that come in at?
Uh, it's about a twelve thousand combined two projects, uh, about eighty-five hundred for the big panels under the pool deck and the remainder inside the pool house.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Michelle?
Um, so I submitted for the Northwater, uh, extension of grant that we were declined. Um, I talked to the community to see if we would be able to resubmit. They said yes. So I'm making the adjustments, adjustments that they recommended so we can resubmit that. And we made a lot of changes on our, um, council calendar and I updated it at town of Lakeview.org so people can confuse it's all there. And then I'm working on the RFP for McDowell Park and Splash Pad and then all the stuff that we want.
Good, that's what I'm doing. Okay. Now we've had all that, but old business is regular town council. Should have that. We're moving to new business. Does anybody have anything else on your old business? Okay, uh, Noni Vandenberg color run.
I'm Allison Hussey and I'm the co-president of Lakeview High School Honor Society. And this year we're planning our Noni Vandenberg Memorial Color Run for May sixteenth. Yeah, yes. We're planning our Noni Vandenberg Memorial Color Run for May sixteenth, which is a Sunday, and uh, I'm here to seek your approval, um, for the routes that we've previously used. Two years ago, um, we didn't get to do a color run last year due to COVID, but, um, the routes have been, uh, approved before and so we're just seeking the approval for them for this year for the sixteenth of May. And we're, um, also in contact with ODOT and the BLM because we're gonna be marking the roads for the routes. And, um, they're gonna be helping us with, um, cleanup and the road closures.
Have you checked with sheriff's department, notified them that you're gonna be doing this?
Um, I do not know the answer to that.
It wouldn't hurt to do that.
Okay.
And what time will this start?
This would probably be an all-day project, so probably from eight AM to around.
It's just like they've done the last.
Yeah, but I just get some kind of an idea. Okay. I would like to make a, um, motion to approve the color run route pending approval from the sheriff's department, probably the county. So, and ODOT, I mean.
Well, you guys already talked to ODOT, didn't you?
We're, sorry, can you?
What's that?
Can you say that again, sorry?
You've already talked to ODOT.
Yeah, we're currently talking to them.
But you don't have an approval from them yet. Are you, are you crossing that? Is there morning thing on the highway?
Either way, I'll second that.
Yeah.
It's usually from eight to one, doesn't it? Eight to one or so.
Yeah, between setup and cleanup and the run, it's usually from early morning to mid-afternoon.
Sorry, sorry. Cut my fingers.
Okay, yeah. Give me a first, second, uh, all over the favor? Okay, you got it.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your support.
Okay, next on the list is, um, just an informational from Department of Commerce. Okay, move on down. Open up a public hearing right now.
Actually, we're, um, the Lakeview World Fire Protection would like to be moved to March sixteenth, which is our work session.
Okay, you wanna, wanna, uh?
We cannot unless, we'd have to renotice that this is a, this is a planning thing. We'd have to do a two-week notice. So the earliest we can do it, I don't think we've got, I don't know if we have two newspaper dates. We could do it to the, I think, we have two weeks of, of the newspaper prior to the thirtieth meeting. We did, yeah, we can get the two weeks publication notice that the old town meeting would, it would be the thirtieth. We'd have to republish in the newspaper. You would also have to re-post as far as that, oh, yeah, statue of the, so.
Okay, so we'll table this till the thirtieth?
Okay, I will then re, I'll have the newspaper redo it and re, um.
Okay, so that can go in D as well, right?
Yeah, then we'll.
C, indeed.
Yep.
Okay.
And that'll be the, be the same with the ordinance also?
Yes, yeah, so C, D, and E?
Yeah.
Perfect.
The temporary council was?
No, no, C, C and D. E is, E is the guy who's approving what you guys decided last time, change sounds clients.
Uh-oh. Everybody's having a bad day.
Does that mean a fire every time?
Except for you.
Except that you have.
Protect a fire is maybe a good.
As I have to say, what if it's eleven fifty-nine?
It has been.
That's confusing. Well, we don't have our phones. Why is it can't tell us the house?
I don't have anything on this. Got it later next. All right, let's move on down to E, Resolution zero zero seven. Temporary modification to town council rules for regular meeting time.
As you guys had said at the last meeting, you wanted to shift your, uh, meeting times to later in the afternoon to make sure to accommodate work schedules, counselors for that period of time. So that's what the resolution does and then expires. I think also requested, so.
Forgot to put that Scott has to bring dinner.
Hey, fine. Doesn't require a resolution. That's just pro forma. Sorry, Scott.
Can we read?
As I have to say, can we put it?
Well, I'll make a, a motion to approve Resolution number one S seven, temporary modification to town council rules for regular meeting time.
I'll second it.
No, I'm sure you will. Been made and seconded to, uh, for Resolution one zero zero seven. Temporary modification to town council rules for regular meeting time. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Move on down, Dave Knowles of Mapping?
Move to the sixteenth.
Okay.
So the table till the sixteenth?
Correct.
Okay.
Cross proclamation for Irish days and taking that over to the paper?
I do think you guys have the vote to authorize the murder case vote. I believe.
You've never had to.
Yeah.
Not heard this.
Nothing on that. Yeah, it's great this.
Which way are they heading, Scott? Oh, they're heading this, heading south. Well, I only have a cat at my place, so she can't text me.
I got it. It came up. Chimney fire. I don't have one of those. We're good. Okay, let's move on down to eight. Uh, Business Oregon, forty thousand dollar loan for fire nine-one-one equipment system and office upgrade. Little fool moves forward and then signature from the mayor is requested.
Um, I put the application in your package, so you can look that over as to what we're requesting. Um, I also asked Scott to send over the pieces of stuff he needs. And, um, so Anna asked him to be here so he can explain what a hundred fifty-two thousand dollar antenna is.
It's a baby, yeah.
At least make it look like a tree.
Well, we are not asking you to actually approve this tonight. This is informational, so you guys can determine if you would like to go forward and wish, likes to go forward, then we would put this, we would attach this to a resolution at the next meeting to enable the mayor to sign this on town to behalf of the town management. So.
So if we go through this forward with it?
It'll go to the next meeting and we will sort of put it in a resolution. Or if you guys would wanna put it on the work session or look over it more.
I like to put it on a work session and look over it. I would like to know like interest rate we're looking at, duration of loan.
Figure out when you wanna do it.
I think you guys are putting it on the sixteenth, right?
Sixteenth?
Sure.
Yeah.
Does that seem soon?
No, sixteen finally.
No, sixteen.
It's good to me.
Four o'clock. Do we have a town council spring break? No, it's, we, sorry, it's a week after. Okay. I won't be.
Yeah, you're behind your four lottery.
Well, close. I'm kidding. Not really.
Not really.
Well, that'll leave the sixteenth as a work session.
Is there anything you wanna ask Scott to bring to the work session other than?
Money?
He, yeah, bring, bring about half this with you. Um yeah. Well, he's got a lot of information and you gotta soak up a lot. There's, I mean, everything that we have over there is seventeen years old. And in yours, you got chairs and uh the office chairs uh are four thousand dollars a piece. We can drop them down to about two thousand, but you gotta figure seven, the ones we have now, uh you sit in twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And for seventeen years, they uh they still look like they're new, except these ones are finally after, probably by twenty years they're gonna be dead. But if you, if you, if you took those chairs and and put it out over a twenty year timetable, it's roughly a hundred dollars a year. Uh at one time, we were, when the dispatch center was up above, we bought, or the town bought uh very expensive uh office type chairs. And they were last six months before chief head chair would take them down to Iron Horse, weld them back up, and then bring them back up. So when we, in two thousand four, when we got the grant, we went ahead with these uh professionally made uh dispatch chairs. And they have, for seventeen years, they've been, right, minor cosmetic things, but they've been wonderful chairs. We've got our end ergonomics and they have all the, the stuff that meets uh BOSHA and the ergonomics and all that stuff.
They look like they're gonna buff you out when you swing there.
Yeah, I mean, they're awfully nice chairs, but but you, well, you pay for what you get.
So is this something we could, because I'm a visual person, is this something we could do down there where we could talk about the presence of that leading part there?
Oh, come down and actually see the center?
Yeah, and then talk about where you're.
Can we have a work session at? Absolutely. I've encouraged council, Jay's about the only one, uh well, and Scott, who's actually came into the center and and ready, I'm sorry. Why don't we have the work session at the dispatch center and you can go over what you need to do?
I think that's a good idea.
So you guys play the grant.
Wait, do you have, do you have to go to the chat?
And what I'm saying is you guys are absolutely operating, you, school does it all the time with like, okay, let's go take it, let's go up to U D school or something like that. So you guys are totally within your purview. Just make sure you notify everybody that it's a different location.
We'll put a sign on there too.
We're not here for.
Well, and I have to put that new address on the agenda. Once it's on there, it's been.
Exactly. Like I know you guys are, it have, like I said, again, seating is, you know, seat, a picture is worth a thousand words. So that you guys are absolutely operating that. You just need to make sure you notify the public where they go. And then to expect, you have to have facilities for that. So make sure you have it such a way that everybody can spend.
So.
And that'll save me a, I was doing a PowerPoint presentation.
Well, I'm, yeah.
That will save me hours.
It's like pictures, they don't have, so is that the only thing we have on the sixteenth? Uh no, okay, so we would go there after, right?
We just moved half of our meeting from today to the sixteenth.
The sixteenth, you're gonna have Dave Knowles here. Okay, um talking about the overall fire protection and GIS mapping. And then we'll also be speaking to the four hundred thousand dollar loan for fire.
Why don't we do a work session?
Do it all over there.
Do, do, you know, just do a work session.
That is a work session, yeah.
That is a work session.
And then Dave wants, we can just walk over there, can't we, right?
Well, Dave could, he would meet us over there.
Or if he doesn't mind.
Okay.
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 Sure, whatever you go.
I'll get it all set up for you guys.
All right, it's high, feel and look.
All right, one last item. Tom Benny.
All right, I'll try to keep this brief since I know we've all been here a while now.
Uh huh.
So, thank you. Tom Benny, I own Tall Town Bike Camp here in Towns. I'm back here today. In my role as a board member for the Oregon Timber Trail Alliance. This is the agency that is charged with maintaining and promoting the Oregon Timber Trail, which as you probably know is the roughly six hundred and seventy mile mountain bike route running from Cave Lake to Hood River. Part of the OTTA's mission, as stated in our bylaws, is economic development in the rural towns the trail passes through. As a part of that, our plan for this year is to operate what's called a track leader style race, which is basically, we start everybody off together from the start and then they're all carrying GPS tracking units. There's a website where they can be
keep their mouth.
tracked through the route, do the searchers.
Yeah, you know.
If they run slide with the rounds, nobody's, to me, you know, the buddy with the car jumping ahead a couple hundred miles. Okay. Where this affects the town? Our planned date for this is July tenth. We would like to have a socially event for the racers, their families, members of the community to meet the people that are crazy enough to think racing six hundred and seventy miles on a bike is a good idea. So we are asking for use of swimming pool park for roughly the hours of five PM to nine PM on Friday, the ninth of July, plus whatever setup and cleanup time we need. I've already talked to our mayor about providing barbecue for participants. I'll be approaching restaurants in town to provide salad sides. We, we chose this as a good chance for the community to see what the Timber Trail is doing. Introduce the town to the riders that are participating in the race. They can see, you know, what we have to offer and give them reasons to come back. I don't have hard numbers that I can prove, but just from discussions with recreational riders on this route, most people doing the Oregon Timber Trail spend between five hundred and a thousand dollars in the time they're in Lake County.
How many racers are there usually?
Say this will be the first time that we sponsor this event. Events like this do tend to grow over time. We plan for it to be a continuing thing. We have just opened registration and have four people signed up. We don't really expect more than probably thirty to forty people. Say this is very much a, a niche sort of racing event. But we have also approached a number of people who are big names within this field. Trying to get some of the, the known races of two years of that.
Has anybody checked with, make sure that doesn't conflict with the swimming?
Triathlon?
Right, no, the swim meet that, the.
Oh, it's not.
What I had been told is that is scheduled for June twenty-sixth.
Yep, that's when it is.
Perfect. Yeah, floats, so that's the.
What about the triathlon? The, are they doing that at the hospital?
They have not called and made any commitments with us. It's kind of first come, first served basis.
Yeah, and I haven't heard anything about that in there in the last three.
Do we have any, do we have sufficient lighting for you there at night?
Still daylight.
Yeah, it's still.
Yeah, July tenth, it'll still be daylight at nine P M.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The one facilities concern that we may have depending on attendance is, those are fairly small bathrooms up there. The Oregon Timber Trail Alliance is willing to rent porta potties to the event. It looks like the attendance is going to justify.
Our bathrooms are very nice, though. I'm not, the guys really did a lot of work two years ago, last year or something like that. So I mean, they, they're working well.
Oh, yeah, and definitely a poaching running water bathroom is everybody's preference, but
Yeah.
I also don't want to overwhelm the town's facilities. Not that I'm suggesting mayor's barbecue is what's barbecue.
I thought that's what the new hallway system was.
Yeah.
Over mayor's barbecue?
Just saying. That was good, Tom.
Oh, you might roll a pick on me. Somebody different for a change. Okay, council, I need a motion.
A motion to.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve it, amending, can we do a hundred dollar donation towards supplies or, I don't know, you guys buy metals?
Support for the program.
Support for the program. Um.
I don't see why not.
So I make my second it with that amendment. Out of a Parks and Rec or out of our tourism funds, I don't know.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's with the hundred dollar donation?
Yep.
Yes.
And FYI, they, there is tourism funding available in those restricted funds. This event would definitely qualify because you have people coming more than X number of miles away, so that is something that the organization.
This is where I told Tom to uh.
Apply for a grant.
We just looked at some kind of playing catch-up. I wasn't gonna suggest that and I don't know where we're at with that. But um I've definitely suggested, but at least there's a hundred or something. You know, I think it's great. I mean, people, it's great people are getting outside and doing stuff like that.
Where's the advantage? Would we make the check out to the Oregon Timber Trail Alliance or to Tall Town?
This would go to the Timber Trail Alliance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, here none. We will adjourn the meeting at twenty-one.